What I would argue is the most frightful study that I have ever led a church through in my ministry. I've never done the Book of Revelation before like we're doing it this time. We're going to look at every verse throughout the book. I don't know how long this study's going to take. We'll pray that Jesus comes back before it's over, and if not, you know, we'll be more prepared. So we'll know if we're right or not, right? And so that's kind of the point. But the Book of Revelation is where we're going to get our attention on Wednesday night. And I have had so many people over the last four years of my ministry here and even before that that ask questions. The Book of Revelation is probably the one book that people have the most questions about when it comes to, "What does that mean?" You know? I remember when I was in elementary school, when we would get to school, if we'd get to school early, which wasn't very often, we'd have to go to the auditorium and wait to go to our classrooms. And I had a little Gideon New Testament that I kept in my book back, and I'd pull it out and I would always read the Book of Revelation. And I can honestly tell you, after reading the Book of Revelation as a fifth and sixth grader, I didn't know any more than when I started because it's confusing. There's a lot in there. So tonight, we're going to look at the first three verses of chapter one as a way of introduction, and we're going to kind of lay some ground rules for how we're going to look at the Book of Revelation and kind of look at just some introductory material. And then next week, we'll dig in with more detail specifically into the text itself. Now, there are 66 books in the Bible. 65 of them, we tend to not have any problems with whatsoever. It's that last one that gets us. And so a good question for us to ask is, what kind of book is Revelation? What's this book about? What's the point of this book? Why is this even an important thing to even ask? And you have the exact same notes that I have. So for this study, I'm going to give you my notes. I'm not going to give you condensed notes. You're going to get everything that I've got. That's all my notes. So just keep that in mind. So here's a quote from a book, one of the books I've referenced in my preparation for this, by Richard Baughman. He's a British scholar. He says, "And answering the question, 'What kind of a book is Revelation?'" He said, "It's important to begin by asking this question because our answer determines our expectations of the book, the kind of meaning we expect to find in it. One of the problems readers of the New Testament have with Revelation is that it seems an anomaly among the other New Testament books. They do not know how to read it. Misinterpretations of Revelation often begin by misconceiving the kind of book it is." And I think he's right on the money with that. I remember there were times, and maybe this has happened to you, where you couldn't sleep at night, and you get up, you turn the TV on, you find some, you know, televangelist or something on the late-night television who's sitting at a desk, and he's talking about all the stuff in the news and how that applies to Book of Revelation. He scouts all Scripture and talks about how the Russians are going to invade, it's going to be the end of the world, and the world's going to end in 1989. So you better not worry about 1999, that kind of stuff. You know, or I remember in 1998, 1999, people were thinking, "Oh, the year 2000's coming. That's the end." And then when that didn't happen, it was the year 2012 because that's when the Mayan calendar ends. And you had this guy out in California who said, "October 21st, 2012 is going to be when the world was going to end," which really upset Kristen because October 22nd's her birthday, and so she was afraid she was going to miss it or maybe partying with Jesus. But of course, October 21st came, and guess what happened?
Nothing.
Nothing! And so then he said, "Oh, we miscalculated." And this has gone on for centuries, over and over again. People will say, "Well, we finally figured out the mystery to the Book of Revelation. We finally know what the Book of Revelation says, and we can finally figure it out." And the problem is, people misread this important book of Scripture. So what I want to do is always be very honest. When we look at Revelation, I want us to really dig in to what's there, not get lost in the weeds, not get lost trying to look under every little thing in the book, try to find some kind of contemporary correlation to what's put on there, but instead to really understand what is God trying to tell us through this important, often misunderstood Book of Scripture. So the first three verses of Revelation. This is how the book begins. "The revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave him to show to his servants the things that must soon take place. He made it known by sending his angel to his servant John, who bore witness to the word of God and to the testimony of Jesus Christ, even to all that he saw. Blessed is the one who reads aloud the words of this prophecy, and blessed are those who hear and who keep what is written in it, for the time is near." This is how the book begins. Before we can look specifically at what's this book about, there are just a few background things I want us to know. First of all, I want us to know who wrote it, and he tells us who wrote it. John. Now, if you've got a really old printed edition of the King James Bible, they'll have a little subheading, you know, like when you get to the book Genesis Exodus and says, "The first book of Moses named Genesis," that kind of stuff. Well, in some versions of the King James Bible, it'll say, "The revelation of Saint John the Elder," or "Saint John the Divine." So there are some people who argue that this is a different John than the one who was a disciple of Jesus. However, most biblical interpreters believe that the Book of Revelation was written by John, the son of Zebedee, known as the beloved disciple, okay? The one that, you know, when Jesus is on the cross, he looks to John and married his mother and says, you know, "Behold your son, behold your mother," and that he is the disciple that Jesus loved, that he is the one who has a very close relationship with Jesus. And he's also the author of the Gospel of John, first, second, and third John. Excuse me. And there's no reason, I think, to argue that that's who wrote it. I think it makes perfect sense to think that this is John the disciple, John the Apostle, at the end of his earthly life, as an old man, writing this book. And so, and one of the reasons why some people don't think he writes it is because it sounds a little different, but it sounds different than any other book in the Bible. So that doesn't, it's not a convincing argument. When did John write it? And I'll, I put this whole picture on here because I just think this is a handsome fellow. This is the Roman Emperor Domitian, okay? Domitian was the emperor of Rome from 81 to 96 A.D. Now, why is that important? Because under Domitian, you had the very first empire-wide persecution of Christians. Nero, who was an emperor earlier in the 60s, he persecuted Christians, like that's when Peter was crucified, when Paul was beheaded. That was located mainly in Rome. Domitian is going further out. And the reason why Domitian is doing this is because he is emphasizing the cult of emperor worship, the idea that the Roman emperor is a god and should be worshipped, and he wants people to worship him. And so if you worship 50 other gods, adding one more god's not a problem, but if you only worship one god, that's a problem. And so in Ephesus around this time, the cult of emperor worship really begins to be enforced, and so Christians are persecuted empire-wide in places like Ephesus and other important cities because of their refusal to worship the emperor. And that actually becomes one of the main reasons why Christians were executed because they wouldn't acknowledge that the emperor was divine. To say that Jesus is Lord was treasonous because Caesar was Lord. And so this was a major moment of change in the relationship of Christians to the world at large. And so Revelation is likely written toward the end of Domitian's reign, 95, 96 A.D. Now, just to give you some context on how old John would have been when this was written, okay? Jesus, earthly ministry around the year 30. John would have been probably the youngest of the disciples, maybe 13, 14, okay? That would have been considered a young man, probably one of the youngest disciples. So he's in his 70s and 80s by this point, maybe even older, maybe even into his 90s by this point. Tradition tells us that John is the oldest of the disciples. He's the only one who doesn't meet a martyr's death, and he dies in exile, okay? So that's when the book was written, last book of the Bible to be written around the end of the first century. Where was it written and to whom was it written? I don't know the quality of the copy of the map that you got. My copy's not bad, but I've got the maps for so. Okay. So you'll see there, and really, this is a generous map. When it says Patmos, you see that little square that says Patmos there, little arrow? I think that was the smallest dot they could make. This is really a speck of dirt, okay? It's a beautiful speck of dirt, but it's a speck of dirt. This is where John had been sent. It was to get him out of Ephesus, where tradition has that he was ministering, to get him away from the Christians. He was exiled to the island of Patmos. And so he's on this little island, and you know, we don't know for sure, but tradition says he was in a cave. And so if you go to the island of Patmos today, there's a church built where the cave is, and that's called the Cave of the Apocalypse because it's supposedly where John was at. And he's writing this book to seven churches. The Book of Revelation starts with seven letters to seven churches. And then that's chapters two and three, and then chapter four begins the visions that John sees of what is to come. So these seven churches, and you see they're Pergamum, Phaetira, Sardis, Smyrna, Philadelphia, Ephesus, and Laodicea. Those are the seven churches. It's in the Roman province of Asia, what's modern-day Turkey. Okay, so you know, here on the news about Turkey, this is the area of the world where this stuff is taking place. And so you have these, these seven churches. So what is Revelation? What is this book? Why does it matter? Okay, what is this book? Well, first of all, it's a revelation. Now, that's not sounding silly, but it's true. What pet peeve of mine, and I'm not going, you're not going to go to hell for this, okay? But it is a pet peeve of mine, is when people refer to this book in the plural. The Book of Revelations, it's not plural, it's singular. It's a revelation, it's one revelation. In fact, the Greek word, the very first word of the book in Greek is apocalypse. It's an unveiling. It's revealing that which was hidden, okay? It's making known that which is not easily seen unless it is shown. So it is revealed, that's what Revelation means. Now, the problem that we have in reading this book is that often, the Book of Revelation, as is general amongst many types of this literature, use figurative or symbolic language. Things are not what they appear to be. There is symbolism involved. You know, things with seven heads, that's not literal. It's not meant to be literal. It's meant to represent something else. John tells us what is not meant to be literal and what is meant to be taken literally. And so you have to find the hints as we read the text, and we'll point those out as we go along. The problem is, we don't normally read this kind of writing. We don't, we don't typically, unless you're reading like, you know, weird instructions on how to put something together, we don't talk in this kind of language. It's best understood in a sense of like poetry. You know, I remember when I was in high school, we had to learn some poems, and I remembered a few because I tried to memorize some of the love poems so I could impress the young ladies. They were not impressed with my love poetry memorization, but I remember one of them that said, "My love is like a red, red rose," okay? And that's figurative language. It's symbolic. It's not meant to be literal, okay? That's how the Book of Revelation is. It's not meant to be taken as 100% literal. To understand that, that helps with a lot of the confusion. Because I'll tell you something that happened. When I, when I was in, in 2008, I got the privilege of going to Israel, and we went to Megiddo, which Megiddo, the hill of Megiddo in Hebrew is Har Megiddo, which in Greek is Armageddon. So we went to Megiddo, Armageddon, a very important biblical site, mentioned the Old Testament, lots of stuff went on. And there was a group, it wasn't our group, there was another group, the Tor group, and I won't name the ministry they were with, that they were having an enactment of the Battle of Armageddon. They had men dressed as frogs. You know why? Because there's references in the Book of Revelation to men dressed as frogs. So they were taking this very literally, and if I were to name the ministry, you would know that, maybe know the name of the organization, might surprise you, but they were taking all this very, very literally, okay? So we don't take these things as literal as we may want to at times because if not, we get confused and mix up, okay? It's not only a revelation, it's also a prophecy. John tells us there in verse three, "Blessed is the one who reads aloud the words of this prophecy." Okay? Now, if I talk prophecy to you, the vast majority of us, we hear the word prophecy, we immediately think something in the future, right? Nearly one thing. That's not always what prophecy is. Most of the time, in fact, prophecy is not telling what's going to happen, it's telling what's actually going on. It's actually speaking truth into the current situation. Look at the Old Testament prophets. They, they talk about things that are going to happen in the future, but they also are talking about what the people are really doing, what God is actually saying. So prophecy is not always about what's coming up. Sometimes prophecy is about how do we understand the times in which we currently live? That's an important thing. I think one of the things that Revelation can do for us is as we read it, as we study it, I think it helps us understand the world we live in so much better without having to say, "Okay, who's this person? Who's this person? Who's this person representing the Book of Revelation?" I think when we look and study this book, what we can actually say is, "How are we as Christians supposed to live in a world where it seems as though the world's against us?" Because guess what? The world is against us. So how do we live in this context? That's a prophetic voice. And so prophecy's not going to tell him what's going to happen in the future, it's also telling us the present situation, describing it accurately for us if we have ears to hear and to listen to what's actually being said. And then thirdly, it is a letter. The Book of Revelation is a letter. Now, I've gotten letters before, and I've never gotten a letter that sounded like the Book of Revelation, okay? If I've got a letter that sounded like the Book of Revelation, I might wonder about the sanity of the person that sent it to me, okay? But it is a letter. It's written to real people in a real historical context dealing with real situations. Here's why that's important, okay? Maybe this will blow your mind like it blew my mind when I first heard it, so. All right? You ready? The Book of Revelation had to make sense to the people who first read it. If everything in the Book of Revelation was future, they wouldn't have kept it, they wouldn't have preserved it, they wouldn't have thought it was important. They'd have thought, "Oh, poor John, he's done gone off his rocker." But instead, when they read it, they heard it and they understood, not perfectly, not without any confusion themselves, but they at least understood it spoke to their situation, what they were going through. There are elements of the Book of Revelation that are clearly future. There are elements of the Book of Revelation that are clearly not future. We'll look at those. But it's a letter written to real people in a real period in time. You have to know that background, at least begin to understand that context to help us understand what's really going on in the book. So how should we understand the Book of Revelation? There's lots of different ways to understand it, and really, honestly, it's not a salvation issue. If you disagree with my conclusions on the Book of Revelation, when we get to heaven, we can ask Jesus about it. And I'm okay with that. And this is not a salvation issue. Now, other things are salvation issues, but the Book of Revelation, how you read it, good Christians, Bible-believing Christians can disagree on that, and it's fine. So there are two things I think we need to understand as we get started with this study that I think are important. The first is the concept of biblical theology. Now, all theology should be biblical, but when we use that term in a technical sense, what biblical theology means is that the entire Bible is one story from beginning to end. And this, the Book of Revelation, is the end of the book, and it should be read as the culmination of the entire story of the Bible. There's a reason it's at the end. Not just because it was written last, it's because it is the end of the story. And if you don't know everything else that happened before it, this story will make no sense to you. In fact, the Book of Revelation has more Old Testament references than any other New Testament book, but it doesn't have a single Old Testament quotation. It has one, and all is allusions, references, shared language, but it's not, like in other parts, you know, in Paul's letters, it's like, "As it is written," you know, quote a passage of Scripture. Revelation doesn't do that. But there are more references to Old Testament language in the Book of Revelation than any other New Testament book, okay? So you need to know the whole story. Imagine going to a movie and missing everything at the last 15 minutes. You would know how the story ends, but you would not understand why. It would make no sense to you. You might, you might come away with an appreciation for the story, but you wouldn't know the full depth of the story. I remember when I was a kid and we would read books in school, I would cheat and read the last chapter, okay? That was a really good policy for me until we read the book where the red fern grows, okay? If you've never read that book, I don't want to ruin it for you, but the last chapter had me in tears in fifth grade, okay? We rolled like chapter four as class, and I stepped ahead and read the last chapter. It ruined the whole story for me because I knew where it was going, so I quit doing that. But the point being in all of that is that the book is the culmination of the biblical story, okay? So if you don't have some reference point to the Old Testament, we're going to look at some of the elements where there's similarities. The story of creation, you know, the Bible starts in a garden and ends in a city with a garden in the middle. That's not by accident, okay? The story of Exodus, God delivering his people through difficulty, that theme reemerges in the Book of Revelation. All of these themes that come up over and over again in Scripture show up in the Book of Revelation over and over again. So biblical theology is so important. Second key thing, this is your big word for the night, okay? I can't think of a smaller word than that to describe this, okay? When we think of things, events, we think in terms of linear time. That is, this happened, then this happened, then this happens, then this happens, then this happens, right? That's how we process things. Recapitulation is the idea that what John is writing, what John is describing, is not necessarily, "This happens, then this happens, then this happens, then this happens." What John is really doing is he's seeing one thing, and he's describing it from this angle, this angle, this angle, this angle, and all the way around until he's got a full faceted view of what's actually going on, which means sometimes he's going back and referring to something he's already talked about before, he's talking about it again, but from a different angle. That can be confusing, okay? And there's ways that you can kind of see where that's coming from, but that's a key concept. So there are going to be times that we're going to look at passages, and then we're going to jump ahead a little bit, and then we'll jump back, and then we're going to kind of be all over the place, trying to fit all this together because that's what John's writing. He's not writing, "This happened, and this happened, and this happened." And he's writing, "I saw this, then I saw this, then I saw this, then I saw this," but he's talking about the same thing. Because remember, it's Revelation singular. It's one revelation. He's seeing one thing, and he's just seeing it from different angles. So that's an important concept to understand. And that's really where it can get a little confusing, and I hope it can provide a little bit of clarity to us as we go forward. We won't really see a lot of that till we get to chapters six, seven, eight, when it's talking about the seal and the bowls and all of that stuff. That's where that recapitulation idea comes in handy. And if nothing else, that's a really cool word to impress your friends and family, okay? So the next time you have leftovers, but they're not called leftovers, call it the recapitulation of dinner, all right? That's a really good way to think about what you're eating. You're just eating the recapitulation of what you had before, so. If you tell your doctor that you had recapitulation, they might put you in the hospital, inevitably. So why should we study Revelation? Why should we do this book? Well, I think verse three of what we read is a key verse for why this study is important. "Blessed is the one who reads aloud the words of this prophecy." I'm glad that it said, "Read aloud" because it implies it's a church activity. I'll use the lectionary. The lectionary, if you're not familiar with it, it's a three-year cycle where it works through the Bible or key parts of the Bible. Some churches use the lectionary. The Book of Revelation is woefully absent from the lectionary. In fact, the revised Common Lection, it has only six references in three years, six references from the Book of Revelation. It's just, it's just kind of ignored because it is weird. So blessed is the one who reads these words aloud. It becomes a church activity, something we do as a church. "Blessed is the one who reads the words of this prophecy, and blessed are those who hear and who keep what is written in it, for the time is near." So by reading, studying, and applying the lessons of Revelation, we can be blessed by God. Another word for blessed is happy. The Book of Revelation should not scare us. The Book of Revelation should encourage us. The Book of Revelation should bring joy to us. There's tough places, yes, and there's some tough stuff in there. But if we leave one of these studies afraid, we've missed the point. We should feel blessed. One, that God has told us what he's told us in this book. And two, that as a church body, as family, we can gather together, we can talk about these things. So by reading, studying, and applying the lessons, we can be blessed. And Revelation helps us understand the world in which we live and to be prepared for how God will bring about his desire into history. Everything that God tells us, he tells us for a reason, and part of the reason God tells us what he does is so that we will be prepared for what the future holds. Not that we will know everything, but so that we will not live in fear and we will be encouraged in the circumstances we find ourselves in. The world is getting more complicated, the world is getting more corrupt, the world is getting more evil, day by day. The Book of Revelation is incredibly relevant to help us understand how we are to live in this world while we wait for the return of Christ, so that we can cry out the very last words of the Book of Revelation, "Even so, come quickly, Lord Jesus." I want to close tonight before we pray with this quote from G.K. Bill. G.K. Bill, Greg Bill, is, in my opinion, the writer of the best commentary on the Book of Revelation. Now, y'all will know I'm American, y'all know I'm American, okay? His magnum opus commentary on the Book of Revelation is about 1,400 pages long. So his publisher said, "Greg, write a shortened condensed version." I've got both. His long one's about 1,400 pages. His Revelation, a shorter commentary, comes in at a manageable 598 pages, okay? But he is good, okay? And you'll see with this quote why I mean that. This is how he begins this shorter commentary on Revelation. "One of the great tragedies in the church in our day is how Revelation has been so narrowly and incorrectly interpreted with an obsessive focus on the future end time, with the result that we have missed the fact that it contains many profound truths and encouragements..." encouragements concerning Christian life and discipleship. The prophetic visions of Revelation can easily disguise the point that it was written as a letter to the churches in a letter which is pastoral in nature. The goal of Revelation is to bring encouragement to believers of all ages that God is working out his purposes even in the midst of tragedy, suffering, and apparent satanic domination. It is the Bible's battle cry of victory, for in it more than anywhere else in the New Testament is revealed the final victory of God over all the forces of evil. As such, it is an encouragement to God's people to persevere in the assurance that their final reward is certain, and to worship and glorify God despite trials and despite temptations to march to the world's drum." And to that, I give a hearty amen. So, let's pray. Father, we thank you that as we begin this study of this important, sometimes complicated and potentially confusing book, Lord, encourage our hearts that we will have a bigger view of you, that you will be big in our minds, that we will rest in you and trust your good purposes even when we don't understand it all. We thank you, Father, for the chance, as a church family, to come together and to study together your work. Lord, may you encourage us and help us to grow in you as we go from this place. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.